All right, so it's 5:48, so we'll call the meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us. I'm City Council Jesse Letterman, Chairman of the Committee on Health and Human Services. I'm joined by our committee member Sean Curran, and we're also joined by our colleague Counselor Tim Allen. I want to thank all the division heads from HHS for joining us, Commissioner Colton Harris, Pam, Molly, and Sandy. So I wanted to call this particular meeting as the first meeting of HHS for the year. Just to check in with you all, I know that you have all been in very unique positions for the last year with the pandemic, but certainly working with you in the last year in just my role as at-large counselor. I know how so many of you have just risen to the occasion and continue to keep everything running. And so I thought it would be good for this initial meeting just to have a check-in with the division heads and talk a little bit about where you're at, what your goals are for the rest of the year, and also how we can be supportive as the city councilor, as the committee, whether that's through local legislation, advocacy at the state level, or just spreading information and awareness. We are going to focus mainly on the divisions today. There is a separate committee that's been established on COVID-19 response, which I am also the chair of and has been meeting weekly with the commissioner to talk about COVID. And so I'm thinking for this meeting, and as a matter of fact, we just came from one of those meetings, I'm thinking for this meeting, we're going to focus more so on the other activities of the department. And also just to note, there is now a separate Elder Affairs Committee, which is working with the Division of Elder Affairs, but of course, still a part of the HHS Division. Glad to have Sandy here, and Counselor Allen chairs that committee. So let me just say before we begin, one more thing, which is I'm really glad to be back as Chair of HHS. HHS is really one of the departments that I love working with because I think that you touch people's lives so individually and so many different ways. And so it's something I've been passionate about since I was on the council. I was glad to serve for two years as Chair, took a year off, and glad to be back with you. So I guess we'll start with the commissioner, just to give us an overview of what's going on sort of outside of COVID with the department. And then Commissioner, we can just proceed through the divisions at your discretion.
Well, thank you very much, and it is always a pleasure to be here. I'm very appreciative of your calling this meeting, Counselor Letterman. I should say that Mr. Belton will not be joining us because Mr. Belton did not bring the link and does not have a computer he said he can access. So I certainly apologize for that. But what I think I'd like to do, if that's okay, is because I will talk about the Office of Racial Justice, our HERSA site visit, our Community Health Worker Program, Environmental Health Nursing, and other parts of the division. But I think I'd like to let the rest of the members of my division go first. I am usually in all meetings the last one to go because if the time gets constrained, I know that I can probably bring up the rear effectively if necessary. So if you would permit me, Counselor Letterman, I'd like you to call on another member of the team, please. Thank you.
Sure. So why don't we start with Molly Fogarty from libraries? And I always appreciate the anecdote. Molly gave me my first job stacking books at the Mason Square Library. So deeply indebted to you, Molly. And how are things going at the branches?
I would say we're doing incredibly well since we closed our doors on March 16th to the public. And we really just basically theoretically closed the doors. Our staff quickly, and I know this is a word that everyone's using right now, but our staff really pivoted right away, and we started looking at what can we do for our public. And so for the first couple of months, March, April, May, June, we really started working on virtual programs, really expanding what we call our e-library, which is open 24/7. You can get onto databases, you can download books, you can download movies. So there's a lot you can do on our website, lots of programming. We started doing virtually, and we took advantage of some of the CARES funding that came to the Mass War Library Commissioners. They had a couple of grant rounds. And they were large grants, probably 3,500 each, but they allowed us to really get better cameras, better equipment to do virtual programming. So we really moved really quickly into that. And then when Governor Baker announced Phase Two in May, we then said we were allowed to do curbside pickup. So we started, it was a brand-new service for our staff. We decided we wanted to do it at all of our locations, all nine of them, and had to come up with procedures and plans to do that. And we quickly got that into place, started that on June 8th. And that has been an incredibly popular service, I would say, since July 1st. We've loaned over probably about 120,000 items. We've had about 20, over 20,000 appointments for curbside pickups. And I'm thinking that when we actually get to the primary, we can start resuming in person, where people can come in the library. I think people would like to have a version of curbside. It's extremely very convenient. They can either select books online, and the staff gather the books, and they make an appointment. We have appointments every 15 minutes at each location, and the books are put out on a table. They're charged out to the patron, and they can pick them up, bring them home, bring them back, bring them home, bring them back. And it's just extremely convenient for a lot of people who are very busy. So we're hopefully think of a way to continue that service when we can open. So that has been extremely popular. We do a lot of what we call, excuse me, make and take bags. So the staff put together craft activities for children that the parents can pick up, and people pick up those on curbside, and we provide a lot of times the information that people need. And another really fun thing with curbside is you can then go and say, oh, I don't know what I like to read, but I like mysteries, and the staff will curate a few books for you, and then you pick those up. We've done a lot with our social media, Instagram, putting together book lists, programming. Just to give you some highlights, we have virtual storytimes, early literacy scavenger hunts that people can do in the city. We have teen and adult book clubs. We've had performances from local musicians. We have online writing workshops, online community art galleries. We have a lot of workforce development programming, writing workshops, online high-tech workshops, and then resume and interview skill workshops. And if you look at our website, you'd see now we've just started a series of programs for small businesses on how to get going. So we're looking at really, really meeting the needs of the community. We have a program called the Book a Librarian Program. So you can make an appointment with a librarian, and you can have up to an hour if you need help with research. A lot of our staff have helped people download materials. They don't know how to do it. It's now there's an app they have to get downloaded on their phone or device, and they've spent up to an hour helping, especially some of our seniors, to learn how to download books and movies. And the craft activity bags, we shifted some of our collection money to ebooks so we could purchase more. And that circulation has gone up by 35% since a year ago, so that's become really popular. And we started online library card registration, which we didn't have before. So people can, if they don't have a library card when it was started, they can apply online and then pick up their card. And we've done a lot with music programming. We have a new fund from the Library Foundation, the Rosewood Music Fund. So we've done online music programs, and something that's really popular. We've purchased 25 ukuleles, just as an example, which are available for the public to borrow. And they can pick up curbside, and then they participate in live music lessons. So it's all over the place, but I think we're really excited that we can now reach people in the community, provide our services. And the latest thing, we were helping out with Elder Affairs with vaccine appointments for our seniors. And that's been extremely, the first week, we had over 400 seniors call us. And last week was over about 200. Now with, I think the two-on-one call center, it's gone down a little. But those are extremely helpful for seniors. We're doing appointments for them at the Springfield Mall. And there's a lot of hand-holding. They want everything read to them. It's very time-consuming, but it's a wonderful service and our staff. I know Helen, we had a really quick meeting with Sandy and Helen, and within a couple of hours, our staff set up, one of our staff members set up a training session for our staff. So that's been really, really popular. So now we're moving along, we're writing grants and providing programming, and really starting to do things that we wanted to do but never really either had the time or was on the list. Now, virtual programs are wonderful. If you work full-time and you want to see a live story hour, we can provide you a story hour after, in the evening. We can record the programs, and you can access them. So it's been great, and it's really a pleasure to work here in the city of Springfield. And Helen is incredible support, and working with city facilities, getting all our supplies that we needed for PP and support from all the departments. So we're in a good place right now, and we're looking forward to at some point opening up.
That's great, Molly. Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Molly about the work being done at the libraries? I just want to raise your hand in the queue. We're also joined by Counselor Victor Davila, who just joined us as well, so we appreciate his presence. And Molly, while we see if folks have questions, is the Read Right Now program still operating in some capacity with COVID?
It absolutely is. As soon as, when we had to close the doors to the students, they started doing lessons for them. In the beginning, it was just printing, printing out lessons, and people came and picked them up at the Pine Point parking lot. And then we started, they started doing online programs. And they found there were about 50 of their students that didn't have any devices at home. So we purchased devices for them, and then we loaned it to them, and then they can do the online classes. And that program is still continuing and functioning really well.
That's excellent. For folks that aren't aware, the Read Right Now program is really the only adult literacy program in the region accessible, and almost lost its funding a few years ago. But thankfully, the commissioner and the administration were able to step in. The council was able to approve some funds out of one of the MGM funds to keep it around our library. So I'm really glad to hear that's continuing. Any questions for Molly, from anybody in the counselors?
Well, yeah, I have.
Okay, Counselor Allen.
Thank you. Is there any projection at all as like the earliest we would ever open? Or are those, any converse, I mean, this isn't just for libraries, just in general. I mean, there is some good news coming, and of course, it could change tomorrow, I guess. But if you ever talk about, like, what's the earliest date you could ever see it happening?
Well, we don't have a date yet. I know we have looked at, when Governor Baker announced Phase Three, we thought we might be able to go into having people come in by appointments because that's all, right now, that's my understanding, Helen, that's the city mandate that you would have to make an appointment to come in. But then everything got worse and worse, and so it wasn't feasible. I think as soon as we can, we will. The staff is very anxious. We're anxious to open. So as soon as it's approved by Helen, and we're in a good place, and the mayor, and we'll open as soon as we can. But we don't have a date yet. And we're still having our facility's air handling systems evaluated by Pat Solomon and his people. So we want, we need, we're waiting. I know he's working on a report for us. So as soon as we can, we will. We want to open.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions. Molly, thank you so much. You're welcome to stay, but I do know it is evening, so.
I'll hang out.
Excellent. So we'll move on to Pam Peebles at TJO.
No one ever wants to go after Molly. Forgive me, I've just printed, I've just written something out to help keep me on track a little bit. And I'm not sure I hit the points that you were seeking, so of course, I welcome questions. Thanks for this opportunity. As I'm sure most of you know, TJO, we kind of think of ourselves almost as two separate departments here. One is all our shelter services, the other being our field services. And somewhere in the middle of those, serving both is our medical clinic, our veterinary services. So I'll touch a little bit on each of those and hopefully tie them together. So I just wanted to say, last year, we provided housing for 3,000 animals. That was about, it's going to be about $500, $500, 500 animals less than a year prior. And of those, about 2,400 were found free-roaming, and 600 were surrendered by their owners who no longer could provide care for them. Because of the pandemic, we modified from, we went from a completely open-door system to appointments only, and moved as much to curbside as possible. We have appointments available seven days a week. So previously, pre-COVID, we had four days of the week that we were open and one into the evening. So we've closed every day now. Our front doors are always closed to the public. However, we've opened up to seven days a week appointments available. Those fill up incredibly fast, and we kind of sometimes feel by saying no today, we're making it worse for ourselves tomorrow, but you can only do so much in a day. We're finding that other animal welfare organizations have placed COVID restrictions, limiting their services, and that's left more people turning to TJO as the seemingly only accessible option. Right now, by far, our largest challenge by far due to the pandemic is, was the layoff of our volunteers. We had the great opportunity of about 1,000 hours of volunteer service here every month by volunteers in all capacities, in every area of what we do. They touched, and really, a lot of times I'll use the phrase, they were our lifeblood. To have that many heads and hands available to you for urgent and ongoing projects is, I will, I guess, defies words. So really, learning to survive without their 1,000-plus hours of work each month is painful. The staff workload has increased exponentially, and we're struggling to keep up with day-to-day shelter work and the demand for services. But each day, I think we're incredibly thrilled that we are really working hard to find creative ways to keep morale up. It's tense out there, so many of the people coming, requesting our services are not in a calm frame of mind. They are very elevated for whatever reason, whether we have picked up their animal, their animal's been injured, something big is happening in their family, or all of those things at once, and more. As far as our field services, last year, our animal control officers, we have five of those and a supervisor. Again, we respond to, we cover Springfield, Chickaby, and Holyoke, so three cities. There are six officers. One of those is a supervisor. We responded to 6,200 field calls, and that was either with standard protocols or modified protocols because of the pandemic. Of those, about 1,100 were investigations of suspected cruelty or neglect and bite incidences, which is a significant increase over the prior year. None of that probably comes as a surprise to anyone. Due to the pandemic, there's additional stress on virtually everybody, and that's affecting our animal family as well. The modifications we did to the field calls include keeping investigations and communications outdoors as much as possible, and we're also relying more heavily on conversations, photos of animals being exchanged back and forth with the owners, veterinary visits at TJO, and also just a really frequent and extended follow-up by the ACO and supervisory staff if we have an animal that's falling under marginal or less care by their family. So, and just thinking about priorities, there are really, there's a number of them. The two that we're hoping, we're trying to figure out, for years, we've had kind of informally found provisions on a case-by-case basis for these two things. But now they're compounded by the pandemic, and the need has become so urgent. We're working towards formalizing programs, and that also includes finding staffing and funding for two areas. One is access to vet care. It's already a, really a, more than significant concern in the area. If there are any pet owners in the room, and you've reached out to your veterinarian, you've probably received a response over the last year that was atypical. Appointments even for 20-plus-year regular clients are not readily available. They're often booking one month, two months, three months or more out. And if this is anything of an emergency nature, even minor, you're being referred to an emergency clinic. Right away, we think, by the ways of way, our VCA Boster Road Animal Hospital sadly closed its doors permanently. So now for emergency, your options are really Deerfield or Windsor, Connecticut, as far as the closest. That's a considerable hardship for many of the residents in our community, and the cost of that is typically viewed as exorbitant. So we're trying, we're trying to formalize some programs around that, which I can answer questions about and talk to you more about if interested. The other area of real concern is temporary housing of animals. Again, we've always had informal programs for people seeking temporary housing due to such things as domestic violence, substance use disorders, homelessness, and hospitalizations, and of course, hospitalizations due to COVID. And also temporary housing due to COVID deaths while a family member steps in have, it's just really kind of snowballed. One of the things we've realized, we didn't have great mechanism in place to keep data on all this, so we've strengthened that over the last few months so we can really capture data on just how many people we're serving and for what reasons. So both of those needs, the lack of veterinary care or access to veterinary care and the temporary housing kind of crisis, if you will, is really, it's led to an increase of incidences of suspected cruelty and neglect, and that is now almost wholly following on TJO's animal control officers. In the past, you probably remember me talking about it last year, but just under two years ago, the MSPCA largely pulled out of Western Massachusetts or this area, they're still in the Berkshires. And that was really a trans, we had to make a transformational change to take on the, what initially was a burden, now it's actually been a great period of relationship building with our police department, the Detective Bureau, and the new Major Crimes Lieutenant. They really kind of bolstered our ability to report and see through cruelty cases. So we have implemented a pretty, a formal program where we can follow up on owners that have failed to meet humane care standards for their animals, and that allows us to carefully monitor the animal's living situation, kind of ensuring all humane basics are provided for the animal's lifetime. And when that fails, that's when we turn to our police and courts, when all the other stuff fails. So those, the intensified relationship with the police department is, just continues to grow. This year, well, 2020, with a police department's help, we investigate and write up the reports, turn them over to the Major Crimes Unit, and they bring charges. This year, 2020, rather, we have brought charges against 12 individuals. 2019, it was 12. So while that's the furthest away from our mind when we start off investigations, we're finding unfortunately, we're heading more down this path due to the challenges that largely the pandemic has brought on, and that we don't see any relief in sight. So I talked a little bit about the cruelty cases because it really, for us, as we see and hear more and more of animals and people in desperate situations, it really points back to our priorities of trying to identify how we can help as a municipal entity allow people to get access to veterinary care, and also how we can provide temporary housing for people in their time of need. So those are really the key things we're looking at, which is really, it sometimes has to take a side to really just getting through the day. It's challenging without our team of volunteers, and it's not possible to keep them on board. Many of them themselves are vulnerable populations, and so keeping them healthy is keeping them home rather than here. So it's all kind of tying in together for a wildly interesting time. We're really keeping our head well above water, but it's, we're tired. That's all I've got for you.
And thank you so much for the update and for everything that you're all doing. I think it's one of those areas where I think people don't think about it or talk about it all the time, but because so many of us have pets and have animals in our lives, I think that it only goes to, to make sense that with the COVID-19 pandemic, anything that impacts our population in such a large way is also going to impact our population of animals in the city. And so I really appreciate everything that you and your team are doing. I know I was fortunate enough to, I've been fortunate enough to visit the shelter many times and adopt from the shelter. And so we appreciate you. I actually was curious about the situation with the MSPCA officer being no longer. It sounds like you've put together a pretty good relationship now. I remember two years ago, that was sort of not yet developed. And there was some talk about the possibility of having one of the ACOs trained to fill that role. Do you think that that's still necessary in the future? Or do you think that the relationship now and the process is in place with the police department meet that need?
It's certainly having someone who was, I'm not sure what the right term is, commissioned as a police officer, if you will. As animal control officers, we cannot bring charges. And it was a relationship with the police department has grown so much, and they've walked us through so much that it's very doable now, and we're really getting it down to really kind of routine for us. We know what they expect, how we can help them out, and hopefully vice versa. It is sometimes very challenging to let a case go over to an entirely different department that we sometimes will lose, they don't always have the opportunity to keep close in touch with us, although they do a remarkable job. But it would be beyond amazing and efficient if we could own that all within here. But it comes with a lot more complexities with, where we don't operate under the police department. We would need certainly the blessing to have an officer here of the police commissioner and more. And it gets much more challenging as we look at those details. So sticking where we are now makes a lot more sense. And we're hoping that by implementing or formalizing some of the programs that we want to put into place, that we can mitigate the need to get to the point where we have to charge so many people that we get, there's early intervention, early intervention. So we're really taking a harm reduction model that says that we are common language is, really, if you self-report, all you have to do is self-report, and we're going to step in and help. And so those people that are calling us in a desperate situation, really, almost no matter the condition their animal or animals are in, we are not taking them to task on that. We are just helping them to move forward and staying in a close touch with them as long, as much as they'll allow us to. But so right now, that doesn't make sense. It makes more sense for us to be proactive in trying to mitigate some of the things that will, put in place some of the things that'll mitigate getting that far.
Sure. I think that makes sense. I think as long as there's a process in place where, when there's a situation that a charge really does need to be brought, that we're able to do that. And maybe a conversation for the future in a post-pandemic world with the commissioner, both commissioners perhaps. But I think as long as there's process in place for now, it's great to hear. Any other questions for Pam at TJO, for any of the counselors? Seeing none, Pam, thank you so much, and please share our appreciation with your team, too. Sandy Federico, Elder Affairs. Oh, Sandy, hang on, you're muted. I'm going to unmute you. There you go.
There. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Hi. Elder Affairs faces the same challenges our cabinet members are facing. Listening to Pam and Molly, I was relating an awful lot to the struggles and challenges that we've been facing and still face. It doesn't matter if you're a human or a four-legged human. We have to take care of those that we've been tasked to help. For us, our shine and outreach divisions, the difference for them, of course, like everything else, it had to be virtual. And where we ran into issues with the seniors is they don't have the technology. And those that have the technology have limited skillsets to be able to navigate certain things. We're especially finding that out now with the COVID vaccine registrations. So we're really thrilled that Commissioner and the mayor had asked us to step in and help with that. We've had, let's see, I think it's 764 calls and 538 registrations just for COVID alone in the last two weeks. We're really happy with that. That's probably three to four people working on this issue alone each day. So that's, that's a great accomplishment because I don't know if you've been to the mass.gov website, but it's quite challenging for those that know what they're doing, but it's also time consuming. And if we're doing the registrations, they're not answering all of the questions, you know, like, like we were expecting them to or wish they would. So it's very time consuming. What we've discovered, just as a sidebar with that, is that in helping them do one task, we've kind of unraveled that ball of yarn with some other issues that they're facing with the social isolation. We're getting a lot of human connecting going on. So it's been very, very, very crucial for us to have this connection with them. And also to just reestablish that life is going to go on, we're with you, we're here for you. So that's, that's what I'm going to say about COVID for now. We're just, the calls, I agree with Molly's assessment that they have dropped off this week as opposed to last week because of the 211 opportunity out there. And also, I, my sense is when it gets to the next level of phase two, we're going to resurge again with the number of calls for that next stage. They're already calling and have been, so we'll deal with it when it comes in. But our shine, our shine division relies on volunteers to do a lot of their legwork, especially during open enrollment, which we just ended. It was very, very challenging to train, retrain them, reassess where they're at, getting them set up at home and how to gather all of the data. Because we are grant driven by a lot of these divisions. And so maintaining the integrity of those grants and being able to report appropriately. It's wonderful to have the money, but, but they, their requirements are still there. There's been no slack in terms of how we have to do things or what we have to accomplish. Our outreach division is still required to get 3,500 seniors, unduplicated seniors, direct outreach services. That is no small task with two people doing it. So when you, when you think about challenges and you think about what you're faced with, you have to stop and take stock of what kind of family we're working with. That's, you know, the team that we have together, they just refuse to say no. They refuse to step back, they refuse to be pigeonholed or blocked into a corner. And I can't say, and I said this to the commissioner the other day, I can't say enough about the DEA team and what they've done. They're, they're wearing 52 hats a day, whatever I'm asking them to do, we got this, we got this. I just, I thought it was important to share that, that COVID has certainly reared its ugly head, but it's also produced some really tremendous sidebars for us in terms of how much we can rely on ourselves, how deep we have to dig, how creative we have to be. Our CSEP division with, you know, we can't, the building is closed to the public like the others. So trying to train these unemployed seniors to get back into the workforce, teaching them how to do resumes. It's just, and again, you still have to produce. So they've done it, they've exceeded their numbers, all of them. I think for, for our division, the biggest challenge with COVID is the programming side of things. We can't welcome them into our home, as we like to call it. We can't hug them, we can't give them so much of what they needed all of this time. It's what they come to us for. We, we hope it's a home away from home for them. So yeah, we've done parades and we've done, you know, drive-by programming in the parking lot. We've done bingo. We, we've, we've found ways to take the ugliness and make it better, if you will. The challenges of moving forward, you know, it's always budget, housing, transportation. How do we, how do we keep spirits up? How do I keep my staff's spirits up? How do we rely heavily on community partners who are also hurting? And on and on and on and on. Our food delivery program is probably one of the spots in our seniors days, they get to see staff when they drop the meals off, even if it's just waving through the window. We're making cards and gifts for them, we give them daily affirmations. We've got grab and go craft kits for folks to either pick up at the center or we deliver them to their homes. We've had a flu clinic out in the parking lot, thanks again to Commissioner Colton. Where they just drove in and were able to be vaccinated. What else? Trying to think here. Look at my notes. That's pretty much it. Just, just doing what needs to get done. We're wondering when we're going to open again and what that's going to look like. Everyone's a little timid, they're frightened, they've been home and holed up for so long. Have expressed, you know, an unwillingness to come out too soon. So this will play itself out. We would love to be able to do more virtual trainings for the seniors. I would love to be able to get some laptops and have a lending program for them so that we can do tutorials, so they can feel more connected to the world. Everything they do requires, you know, learning those skills. So we want to be able to help them and bridge that gap for them. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. I know I was, I was with Counselor Allen and our subcommittee before on this very topic. So forgive me if I'm repeating myself, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Sure, well Sandy, thank you so much. And like I had said at the beginning, I know you were with Counselor Allen's subcommittee the other day. You also were with us at the first COVID-19 response committee. So we're certainly appreciating continuing to hear about all that Elder Affairs is doing. And I think, you know, it very much is a family atmosphere. You know, I mean, I, you know, since my election, I always made a point to visit each senior center every year and really missed the opportunity to do that this year. But I think it's fantastic that we have a team that, you know, is continuing to check in on folks. I know at the beginning of the pandemic too, I mean, you guys were calling through members, just checking in.
And we still do that, we actually still do that. We do the wellness checks. It's a big, big part of, of keeping the lines of communication open, keeping spirits, answering any questions they may have and resourcing out if we need to, whatever they're going through. And in the beginning, I might have mentioned this last time, folks had children who were looking in on them and then they were sick. And when this, when people started taking it seriously, because the numbers were in their faces, there was a withdrawal for many people with children who, who didn't see them. So they would get a phone call, but there's nothing, of course, like seeing your children or your friends, neighbors, whatever. So that was a big chunk of heart that they lost. And we're, we're striving to give them as much as we can to replace that.
Well, thank you so much. Are there any questions for Sandy on anything related to Elder Affairs before we move to the commissioner?
Oh yeah, just one comment, thanks Sandy for the update. And somebody reached out to me today from one of the senior groups. I can't remember, I'll have to look at my texts, but, so I want to do a, I'll talk to you and Helen about doing our, our next Elder Affairs meeting and how we, what we want to try to accomplish in that. So I'll call you probably tomorrow.
Okay, that's great, that's great.
Thanks for the, thanks for the update and thanks for the help, Molly, for your people helping out with registrations for COVID, appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Allen, yes, and definitely huge on the, you know, really the sort of impromptu call center that you guys have been able to stand up. You know, when Council President Williams and I were at the vaccination site the first weekend to visit and see what was going on there, we encountered a group of individuals, more than one, we were there for about an hour and a half, who had shown up and they just didn't know, they just didn't, they didn't have the resources to register online. So they figured I'll just come here and even there, there were, at that time, were no resources to register if you showed up, which is also not advisable. And we were able to provide the number for the main library, which was actually open. It was Saturday morning and they were able to call and get an appointment booked. So we really appreciate everything.
That was very helpful because we could only help them between eight and four, Monday through Friday. So the extended hours and the Saturday hours. And Molly, thank you, if you're still with us, I don't know.
I'm here.
It was just great to partner with somebody else in the cabinet who saw the need and stepped right in. And just really, it was a tremendous, tremendous help for us and we appreciate it.
Fantastic.
I would also say, you know, our staff, to what you said about yourself, they just jumped on this, they really wanted to help. And they were, you know, we had one person who would send out emails, there are 50,000, you know, 50 appointments, there are 100 appointments. So, you know, like a cry for them. And I know when we first talked about it with Helen, we had a meeting with our managers to see if we could actually implement this. And they're, well, how are they going to get rides to Eastfield? You know, people are very, you know, in our division, the people that we hire really care about people. They really want to help, it's not, it's very genuine and it comes across. So it's, we're very happy to have them around.
It was a great opportunity to jump in and actually do, you know, when some of us are walking around and, you know, well, what could we do, what could we do? This was a great opportunity. I think we channeled all of our energy into this task because it was, it was there.
Well, please, please express our thanks to them as well. And perhaps once we find ourselves on the other side of this, maybe we can do something for the division, like a luncheon or something to really, really thank people. I know we're a ways away from that, but I'm, you know, I'm hopeful to show our appreciation in some other ways as well.
That would be tremendous.
That is one thing we've been talking about.
Excellent, well, you know, I'll show up now, so.
Bring the ice cream.
I'll bring the ice cream, yes. So for, so each year, my wife and I host ice cream socials, which is what Sandy is referring to. And so it's, it's a fun attribute to have associated with. So we're making good time at 6:30, we wanted to wrap at 6:45. So we'll, we'll move for our last, but certainly not least to, to the commissioner for other division updates. Oh, sorry, Commissioner, you're muted.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. I also want to ask you to request that you host another meeting for Mr. Belton. He's anxious to update you, so if you could make that effort, it would be well appreciated. I am going to try to be as succinct as I possibly can. There is a lot going on on the Department of Health and Human Services. Let me start with our HERSA site visit. As you know, we have a health center that we run from the department. It is a $2 million program, health services for the homeless. It is a 330 federally funded health center. And we had a three-day site visit from our federal government partners in HERSA. The site visit was virtual, but it was the most intense site visit that I've ever had with HERSA. And we've been doing this every three years so we can keep our grants. So we had a three-day site visit last week, it went well. There were some findings that I expect to get from HERSA, but that has not happened yet. Our medical team headed by Dr. Balder, our dental team headed by Deborah Burns. And of course, our case management team that is over at Open Door, Open Pantry. As you know, we bill for these services and so it was a wonderful experience to work with this team. So our health center site visit went well. And again, I expect there will be areas that will need to tighten and I look forward to their report. The Office of Racial Equity is staffed now with Chris Mary Gonzalez. She's in the process of developing a strategic plan and a outreach portfolio for the office. As you know, based on COVID, it has been difficult for her to get out and do the things that she would like to do. But she is working virtually to gather feedback from the community in terms of how they see this office functioning. And what are those core components we as a city need to be able to strengthen in order to be successful in the Office of Racial Equity? She is working with the mission or the mission, as you know, we were going to hire two individuals to do the outreach, but we decided not to do that and to partner with the mission, which is headed by Brother Johnny Muhammad. They have been working since October. Their first report for the quarter is due to me this month, but I know that they have been doing the outreach because they are in contact with me often in order to let me know how things are going as far as their street work is concerned. One of the areas in that contract that we built in was really not to identify individuals by name, but rather to strengthen the relationship so that the police department knows that they're doing the work and that there is a communication comfort level around the work of the mission with Springfield Police and the Office of Racial Equity. The homeless outreach, our cold weather task force meets. I know Sandy is a member of that task force. And so that task force meets to talk about the strategies that we need to employ as far as homeless individuals are concerned. And right now, it appears based on the reports we're getting from Jerry McCafferty, from Terry Maxey, from Rescue Mission, that there is capacity, and Friends of the Homeless, if I didn't say that, that the capacity to house individuals who are doubled up and or homeless appears to have been strengthened. We did our point in time outreach in January. And I believe that the number of individuals that were found on the street was in the single digits. Although I don't have that number in front of me at this point. We're also involved in the Continuum Care Initiative. As you know, we're working with youth to make sure that our youth are connected as far as housing is concerned. The city got a large grant. I think you've had Jerry McCafferty in to talk about the grant. If you haven't, I'm sure you will, in order to know what those pieces are, who's funded with that money and what we are asking those individuals to do. Catholic charity got a good bulk of the money. They have stood up hotel rooms and other areas, particularly during COVID, to make sure that individuals who are COVID positive or who are unhoused have a place to go. One of the places that they're utilizing in Springfield, not for COVID, is the old Howard Johnson's, which is on Boston Road. Again, this is not for COVID, the COVID positive hotel is in Pittsfield. So that is not, this hotel is being used for individuals who may have some challenges around having some place to stay. But again, Friends of the Homeless has, or Community Support Options has absolutely expanded their capacity and they're feeling good about that. Environmental Health Division continues to go to businesses to make sure that they are following the COVID-19 plans that have been put in place. That is in addition to their regular duties to inspect the restaurants and make sure that we are throughout the city adhering to the and make sure that we are throughout the city adhering to the sanitary code. So they continue to do that. Nursing Services has been extremely busy, not only doing the vaccine, but also contact tracing and the vaccine clinics that we have had to stand up. They have been extremely, extremely busy, as you might imagine, during this time. Substance Use Disorder Unit, many of you, Justin Chalman, right now heads that program. And they are working with Hampton County, with the Sheriff's Department. The focus of their work right now is the street outreach, but it's also looking at how we have a comprehensive database in the city of Springfield that can identify. And I know, Counselor Letterman, you have been involved in, and you may have been at some of these meetings that are happening in order to solidify the data that we need in order to be able to do intervention and prevention. So that, that is going on. So we are still working with Springfield Public Schools, even though remotely, around, you know, prescription drugs, alcohol, those kinds of areas that we see as very important to youth development. The other area I think that we are doing a lot of work in at this point is the cold weather. Well, I told you about the Cold Weather Task Force, but the homeless outreach. There are folks still on the street who are continuing to try to make sure that there are no unsheltered individuals in the city of Springfield. So those are some of the initiatives, and I'm not going to belabor because I could talk about my staff for a very long time. The Public Health Emergency Response Team, amazing job, just keeping us focused around what we need to do as far as COVID-19 and other public health emergencies that come up to the department, such as the snowstorm we're getting ready to have and other things that they work with, DPW, as well as facilities to make sure that there are no individuals in our city who are not, who are lacking resources. A big part of their work that we have not had to do is to stand up shelters. So should a, us, an apartment building or a neighborhood go down, we have continuity of operation plans so that we can open up a facility. We're able to get cots in if we need to. So that's the emergency response team's job, along with monitoring the weather and monitoring the city. So I'm going to stop there and just because I know it's 6:42. See what I mean when I say I can bring up that, keep, keep it within the timeframe? So I'm going to stop there and ask if there are any questions.
Oh, thank you so much, Commissioner. I appreciate the overview. And I have, I have a couple of questions on substance use disorders and, and plastic bags as well. But before I, I jump into those, are there any other questions? I want to give space for, for my colleagues if they have any questions around anything HHS-related before we kind of wrap up with some final questions.
I don't have any questions, Jesse.
All right, Counselor. And Counselor Davila, you look, look good. All right. So Commissioner, I just want to check on two things. You did mention the, the work that Justin is doing. And, you know, I certainly have been engaged with him and with Tapestry and some of the other organizations. I think there's some real concern about, you know, the, the epidemic around opioids that, you know, continues to coexist alongside the COVID-19 pandemic and how those two things are interacting and, and what we're able to do. I know that you mentioned the Sheriff's Department's grant and the data issue. So I, I, the next meeting I think that we will call actually will be on, on that issue and specifically around the data, because I think that there, there still seems to be some miscommunication or disconnection, not even just with city entities, but just trying to make sure that we can get all of the data in one place for that street outreach to occur. And I know that we at one point had it going without the Sheriff's Department, just locally. And so I want to make sure that, that we're able to do that work again. So I think that, that'll be the next meeting that we convene in the next couple of weeks. So I just wanted to put that on your radar. And then around the, I know that we had worked together with the mayor to make a decision in consultation with counselors around the plastic bag ordinance that, that went into effect in January. And because the city had never formally implemented it prior to the pandemic, we wanted to allow some room for individuals to come into compliance. I just wanted to make sure that when the environmental health team is doing those visits, they are, you know, at least sort of reminding folks about that the ordinance has gone into effect and letting them know that, you know, in the future, there will be enforcement action around it. I've seen some stores have made the transition already, especially the larger stores. And I think that was why we wanted to allow the leeway was with the smaller stores, absent a full-blown implementation campaign, we wanted to make sure that they had plenty of time. So I just wanted to see if that is occurring on the environmental health side.
Yes. And now, as we talked about, and I appreciate your patience with this process, Counselor, we were not able to do a, a, an on-force enforcement, if you will, because of the pandemic. But when they are in the stores, they are reminding individuals. One of the things they are not doing, and I know that you will agree with this, particularly in the smaller stores, is being punitive. We are simply, we have, you know, a, a paper that we give out, this is where we are. You know, we would appreciate it as your supply, because what we're hearing is, I bought all these plastic bags, particularly the small stores, and I'm not, I want to use them before we transition. And so we're patient with the process. But yes, to your question, they are reminding individuals that this isn't in, in force and that at some point it is going to be enforced. So yes, they are doing that.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all on the same page there. I think once the pandemic winds down, we can work together as well as with, you know, community groups to be able to go out there and, and really do the implementation that needs to happen. I think another thing we've, we've talked about, and I'd love to work, you know, Sandy and Molly with you around, is getting some reusable bags and doing a reusable bag campaign, maybe doing reusable bag giveaways at the senior center and at the libraries, because that's something we hear, you know, folks interested in. So, you know, of course, the focus needs to stay on the pandemic and on the public health side. But just wanted to make sure we're at least giving stores some heads up in this time relative to what the, what the future will hold. So that's, that's fantastic. So I, I don't have any further questions tonight, Commissioner. I appreciate just being able to get the baseline on where the division is. And I think what we'll do going forward is what, what I usually do with our committees, which is, you know, just committing to holding at least one meeting a month, always just to make sure there's a platform and then calling issue meetings as needed. So, you know, and, and obviously the COVID-19 Response Committee meets weekly. So we certainly have, you know, plenty of opportunities to, to interact around the division. Does anybody else have anything to add before we move to adjourn?
Just a couple of things. I just want to remind you that Tapestry and the Methadone Clinic on Mill Street do send me data reports once a month. So I'm not sure if you're planning to invite them, but I think they have been responsive. When I've asked them, I asked them a while ago, I need your data, and they are sending it. So they may be good additions to the, to the, the meeting that you're planning to call, unless you were planning to invite them anyway.
Certainly, certainly, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Is Walmart a part of the plastic bag ordinance?
Yes.
Well, they, they definitely. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
They are still doing.
Please, 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 please reach out to them. Please.
I will. I will.
And so I think, you know, like I said, most of the larger stores have, have come into compliance at this point. You know, I think, again, we understand the, the financial side for the smaller store. Then we want to be respectful of that. But on the, on the larger end, it's time for them to transition. So thank you all so much. Greatly appreciate you being here, spending some time with us. And again, please share with your, with your entire teams our appreciation. And we'll entertain, Counselor Kern, as a member of the committee, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
So I'll move.
Second.
I, I will second it. And, and I believe we are both in favor. So this meeting will, will end at 6:40.
Thank you, everybody.